My campaign has to sure.
Actually, I'm in the first.
So, I want to report.
I might be up. I guess.
January or September?
Oh, I see that.
No. Oh, I have. Yeah. Sure.
Oh, there's three girlfriends. I think she should have to be. That's why I put me off.
Yeah.
Huh? It also what they're.
Right.
Yes. It was a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. I got her out of my house. Like, sign everything up here on the first house. You know, the job.
Yeah.
It's good to sit there just like that. Yeah. I heard it was a good one. I'm sure.
It's work.
It's very good. Not really. That's all I was talking about. So, you know, I would like to take a portion of the purpose of it.
Well, yeah.
Hopefully, it's safe and cool. And then, yeah. No, that's not. It's literally. There's a couple of them. Okay, so. You need to go. That's not right. You need the wrong report.
Long that I can.
Look for this. The thing is, you know, yes, that might help with it. That's all.
Okay, and he was over.
But I need to tell someone something.
Yeah.
Every day.
We're in a job. Yeah. He's got a job. Yeah. He's got something.
I got this. I got all these. It's a test. You can do that.
He's got one. Do you have enough money? I don't know. I love my house. And then, I always have something else. I'm sad. I don't know. But thank you. I can take these.
Well, I have a thing. I have one in my pocket that I just want to do.
I'm staying with the little thing.
That's all. Thank you.
If you need more, you can go off to the.
Awesome, Julie?
Yeah. Yeah. If you can pitch them all. All right.
Sure.
I thought the community center. I'm not going to.
I just stayed in my store.
Right when it went.
I was like, I was like, I was like, I don't carry them on.
You're a major publisher anymore.
I'm happy with you. You know, a lot.
You get a free match, but I didn't want. All real. So, this is the biggest. It's well worth it. I swear. We're a big one.
Yeah. I'm surprised you asked. Oh, no. No. I was just saying. No, it's in a white letter. It's all in. About the. This one. That's it. Now, it's the. You guys can sell it. I'm sorry. And it's for a minute. It's like, I don't know.
Well, usually, I got.
It's a lot.
So, we're like, well. What? Yeah. For research and policy, something like.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Now, what is this? Jesus. That should be posted from nothing. Oh. Or any of us here. Here from today. It's like, I was. My game. It's important.
I look at her. She's. I'm sorry. That's her.
Anyway, it's.
Um, I see you're at the application. Oh, yeah. That's all we have here.
All working here. Communication. All working in.
I think he's. She's. Never notice. That's all I can. I was right on. I was. Is that the one that I had? I think this is.
Well, I got me this.
Hey, you read that when you were also there.
Oh, yeah.
That's right.
I don't know who would. Hey. I couldn't get him. Really?
There's a series.
Okay.
All right. You might be hearing something. Maybe. Did not come out?
No.
Ask Kevin. Kevin knows. I looked at it last night. Commending the orders. Jill Menard.
Here.
Michelle Otto.
Here.
Scott Butler.
Here.
Lloyd Johnson.
Here.
Brad Young is here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and its republic, which stands one nation, united in one soul, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any open floor requests? Maggie?
No.
Okay, good. Let's move on to the consent agenda or the agenda for the next. Any changes to the agenda? Oh, yes. Okay. Under the minutes, there are eight. We'll strike number two there. Okay, three move that. Good, it's incorrect. We do have an infected.
Um, I, so, council member Johnson brought to my attention that there's a statement in the minutes that he wants corrected. So, he is asking that it be removed.
Okay, we can move that to the next key. Other than that, anything on the agenda? Let's move on to the consent agenda. For A1.
I'm doing it. I've amended it.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as last?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment. One second.
Jill.
Aye.
Michelle.
Aye.
I vote aye. Aye. And Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries by. Okay, on the approval consent agenda, we removed a workshop minutes and also on the council minutes, we should add Melissa Goodbog into the ones who are present. Any other changes to the consent agenda? Any discussion?
I just have a question on, um, Minnesota Public Works Association Playground Inspector Plating 635. Sean, is that inspection of the parks or what is that? You know?
I do know that is to begin one of our public works employees as a certified playground inspector.
Okay.
That's exam and class.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? There are motions to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
One second. Michelle.
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries by. Open consent agenda. Okay, Red County Sheriff's report. Any comments that you have for it? Okay, any discussion? The one thing I did notice is we did not get the call for service report this month and it may have been that we received it, but just didn't get it in the packet. Okay?
No, you said it's all in nine now.
Pardon?
It's all in nine.
Gives you one report. If you look, there's two, um, there's a case number, one, and then there's a CFS number one. So, there just gives you one report and then. The thing that's missing, though, is the location, general area where it occurred. That was quite doubtful. And the other thing on the call for service report, it was more of a timeline report, which was helpful as well. So, Maggie, let's look and see if we can't get the timeline report as well. I know that maybe I'm a visual piece, but if I could push that to us, that would be helpful. And then, everyone should have also received the six months review for the Red County Sheriff's report as well. Any discussion? Let's go to number eight. Activity reports, first of all. Jill?
Um, I attended the personnel meeting. I arrived late, but finished up the AUAR workshop meeting, attended the Montrose Day Fish Fry on March 4th, attended the Partner Rec meeting, and the Montrose Days committee meeting, um, interacts for Montrose Days. Uh, there is a luau taking place this Friday that you teach from 5:00 to 8:30 right here at the community center. So, tell your friends, tell your family, come on out.
Does it bring the information again?
Yes, I believe that's on there. I think so.
If you bring in, you get like $2 off or something.
That's what they've always done previously, and I'm pretty sure it's fairly unchanged.
I don't have to fire it.
That's just. Yeah.
Okay. Michelle?
Um, I attended the personnel meeting as well, Partner Rec's council meeting. That's.
I attended the emergency planning meeting workshop, the AUAR workshop, uh, Montrose Chamber of Commerce meeting, uh, the Chamber of Commerce Boomerama event, uh, which raised $136 for a Lucas machine for the Waverly Fire Department, uh, and collected food. I think it was a little over $80,000 for a food donation, and several of our local organizations attended that as well. And then, the planning lunch for the Chamber of Commerce as well. Tended VFW meeting, the Feed Food Drop, uh, the Delano Council Meeting with our Beyond the Yellow Ribbon representative to address Beyond the Yellow Ribbon with, uh, Delano, uh, and the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon has gotten some interest from Delano as well, where their Beyond the Yellow Ribbon team is not quite as active as ours is. Tended the funeral for Sergeant Dylan Semolina. He's the Marine from Delano that was killed in Hawaii when the aircraft went down there, um, both at Bloomington as well as his internment at Fort Snelling. Tended both fish fries, the caucus meeting, uh, Pro River Scouts meeting and training for adult leaders, a Cocalado Friends of Scouting meeting, Blue and Gold Banker for our Cub Scouts, um, pulled up the Chartered American Badness Event in Anniedale for training for 150 scouts, and then, the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Welcome Home for my favorite Marine, John Lee Meier.
That's not it.
Are you sure?
I think so.
Okay.
That was enough. Busy month.
Um, let's see. I was at the city council meetings. I did attend the Feed, um, the Produce Drop here, um, also the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon meeting from the Blue and Gold Banker for the Cub Scouts, um, and then also our first welcome home party, um, for John yesterday.
Thanks, Dick. Um, all the council meetings, the special meetings, the workshops, fish fries, and all the rest of them. Okay, um, let's go on to the outdoor recreation grant application update.
Mayor Council has sent a Friday's update. Um, at the last meeting, we passed resolution number 2016-06. Um, it was, staff was going to work on submitting an outdoor recreation grant through the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources for, um, the, uh, park, um, and a blank. Um, we were going to submit for a shelter. However, the deadline is March 31st, and we decided as a group that we need, wanted more input from the Park Commission and others as to what type of shelter, if it wanted, if we wanted bathrooms, if we wanted enclosed, um, and so, we wanted more information about what it would look like, and so, we decided that we would put it off until next year, and according to the schedule, we felt like, um, that would be doable since we do have to still do grading work up there. So, I just wanted to provide an update on that. We didn't want to put something in that people didn't like, so.
Okay.
I have a question on that. If there was concerns or discussion on what kind of facility you wanted down there, could that have been on the Partner Rec agenda that was last week?
Well, it could have been, but we wanted not just the Partner Rec. I mean, we felt like it would take more time. Um, we didn't know if we wanted to get, you know, additional people outside of the Partner Rec, um, just because it is, um, it is, I mean, it is kind of a big decision as to, you know, if we want, I don't even, and I don't know if the Park Commission wants to go out in the community and actually ask, um, so, we just decided in February that we didn't think that would be enough turnaround time, even for the Park Commission to consider what would be what the community wanted, so.
And as far as then, the package is pretty much in place as to what the plans for building and what the plans in the project are before you can submit them.
Correct. When is that grant open up there?
It'll open up again for next year, and which will give us a good opportunity too, because you have to use it within two years, and we're, it's still, um, a lot of the, the regional park is still kind of up in the air. We're still waiting to hear back from the Army Corps of Engineers, um, and so, I think actually holding off another year will be good just for time wise. If we did get the grant, then we'd still, we wouldn't be pushing time.
We just need to make, my only concern is, we obviously need to have it in the forefront earlier, so if it opens up in August, we need to have that available in August and start working on that, so we don't want to do this problem again. Mm-hmm. So, February. When did we get the commission office grant originally?
I don't know. Um, I mean, I have only been here since November, so I, I can get you that information. I don't know.
Because it was yourself a joint, I think, when I did work.
Right. With, with, well, I mean, I think it was a group effort with the engineer as well and.
Justin, do you know when the information came?
I don't know exactly. If I remember correctly, it was right around towards the end of December is when they announced it. Um, I think we first started talking about it right at the first part of January. Oftentimes, grants in general, um, just a general statement about, about these grants, they're especially the ones that come up on an annual basis, it's almost best to be kind of know, they're pretty similar from year to year, so, a well-developed application is the best application, is the best chance for success, and in, in doing a lot of these and seeing a lot of it and seeing what gets rewarded, awarded, and what doesn't, uh, it's very clear which ones are, are very far along in the process as far as we develop. We started talking about it as a staff level. There was a lot of, there's more questions than answers that came up just at once ourselves, and if there's more questions that come up than answers, uh, at a staff level, usually, the people reviewing the applications can see that, um, and, and they simply don't, and they're so competitive that that does just a, a proper career for them to have. Um, there's questions that we have on electricity, timing, with the grading, you know, what if the grading doesn't get done, then what would we do, things of that nature, so, that's, you know, I think starting now for next year is, is a good thing. It's starting to develop. You know, there's even questions about where we put the shelter, um, exactly which size, how much cost, developing some drawings to include in the application is always a good thing. It shows you that you thought about it, went through a public process, and everybody's on board with the specific drawing and just all those little details, um, and starting now absolutely for next year is the best thing to do.
So, when do we expect to see it coming to the Partner Rec Commission? The information on this so that it can get up to the public to get their opinion, because it should go to Partner Rec first to get, you know, kind of how they want to proceed, and then get it up to, you know, to the public as maybe says get other than that. When do we expect to see that then? If you're saying.
I guess, are you asking me or who are you asking?
I mean, it can go.
What was the answer?
I don't know. It can go, uh, as soon as possible. I, I think it'll be in segments, like, you, I mean, you can always bring it to the next Partner Rec, get a little input, and then, I mean, I know at a staff level, we're, we're hoping to, I mean, we're continuing to discuss this. Um, this was something we discussed at our last staff meeting, so we haven't gotten too much further since then, but, um, I think you, we can always bring it there, get ideas, and then, um, as we move forward, um, continue to, to keep coming to the Park Commission and get more input, so.
Um, and we may want to be, find a different way to get public input in reference to that, because the last town hall meeting that we had that was referenced to parks was really poorly attended. The only other couple of people that actually had that meeting.
I don't think it was advertised well enough. Well, I did like the two of these notice.
And the town hall was poorly attended, but when there was discussion over the regional park in general, there was a lot of people, and so, yeah, we advertise it differently.
So, we need to make sure that it's out and so we can actually have a good attendance.
Right.
Okay?
When is our next town hall meeting?
Uh, I don't know. Well, another thing, Justin, how was the grading at that point? Heard anything more about from the national background?
Um, I have gotten, heard back from them a couple of different times, and, uh, they asked me some more information here probably four to six weeks ago, and I got that information back over to them for a week, um, so, they, they have that information, and basically, they, they update me about once a month and says, say that, well, um, I mean, a decision hasn't been made, we're still very hopeful, and that's the word I keep getting. We're very hopeful, but.
So, is weather keeps up, and like, you, it's hard, there's a better.
Well, I guess regarding that, we did, we met with them on a site here, we sort of, everybody agreed down, um, hands down, everybody, um, there probably will be a 2017 grading project, um, because there's a lot of things we have to get in line as well, and really, for them, from their aspect, for their planning, 2016 is getting too rushed for them. That was back last long event with us, or maybe this, maybe this one there, I guess it was, but, yeah, um, there are some things that we need to make sure we plan off correctly, uh, for leg needs and what.
Yep? Okay. And then, yeah. Okay, 2016 UCF away, uh, the annual conference training. And you what are the dates on that?
That is this, uh, it'll start Tuesday evening, this Tuesday evening and go till Friday, so I just wanted to provide you, Mayor, and the council, an update that you and Wendy will be at that conference at the, this week. And I will always send you by an email to let, you know, as a reminder as well.
Just draw nobody under that period, right? Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Why did you turn on to?
Good. And then, Hannah will be there as well. Okay. Public Works, seasonal hire.
Good, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, before you tonight in your packet on page 28, is a, uh, brief memo requesting authorization, um, to advertise for and to interview the three seasonal employees for the, uh, 2016 summer season. As the memo states, years pass, we've gone two, um, seasonal employees, 2007, we had three, and then since then, we've had two, and, um, we get an ever-increasing workload on seasonal, um, work, and it would be very beneficial for us to add that third seasonal employee this year, so we're asking the council to authorize that for us tonight.
Will this also help the vacation problem that we got?
This will help, definitely help the, uh, vacation problem, yes.
Any discussion? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, Sean, to, um, hire three seasonal employees for 2016.
One second. Um, with that as well, stick with our policy to hire people that are in school, so we have, don't have those issues with unemployment. That's correct. Um, I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries by. To hire three seasonal employees. Thank you. Emergency management.
We do not have anything under that.
Um, we did have an emergency management meeting, um, talked about how we're going to address that since Matt is going to be the assistant chief and won't be able to fill those duties, um, talked about how that would be played out, and we would kind of share that with the staff and the council until such times as we look at another alternative to doing that, uh, and then we put out the request at the fire department and had a junior, very junior officer, um, put some interest into it. However, we discussed it and, and felt that a fire department employee or a fire department officer would probably be called to the scene no matter where we were, so it would be best to have someone that's not affiliated with the fire department fill that role. Um, kicked around possibly looking at a part-time employee or taking on those duties at the council or at the city staff level, um, or maybe sharing that responsibility with the city staff. We haven't finalized that, so, uh, as of now, it will be shared between fire department lead, um, and the staff, Sean and Maggie, and then council with myself taking lead and probably Melissa as deputy. Any discussion?
The last time we looked for emergency management, we advertised for it. Is there a plan to do that now or just continue?
Not until we figure out how that is just going to flush out. Okay? And then, also, it's a budget issue as well. It's not in the budget this year, so we need to look at where we're at, how we're going to flush that out, exactly what we're looking for before we actually go out for it, you know, and hire. Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could add just a brief word. Um, with that being said, uh, just remind any council members or staff that has not had the required dance training to, uh, see if they can find time to fit that in and get caught up to speed on that. If you have something where it happened, then you'll see.
Okay, personnel committee meeting. Met the 18th of February, approved the minutes from the last meeting. We finalized the, uh, commission appointments and position descriptions for council approval. Uh, we reviewed the personnel policy draft. There's still some concerns there as far as pay increases and how that will flush out. We'd like to have a legal opinion, get some legal wording on that before we finalize the personnel policy. We talked about the performance review process and discussed updating the, the performance reviews and also maybe having a legal review of those as well. We just, um, talked a little bit further about the legal language of a pay increases and moving from a staff program to a flexible percentage as far as the pay increases based upon performance and then the current situation of the budget as well as the economic situation, and with council making the approval on that amount. And then, we talked about the COP and how that was impacting the staff with regard to the 601 Nelson Boulevard COP. And also, to put out a survey in reference to the, um, what the feeling was in the public as far as the hours for the city offices. as far as the hours for the city offices.
Where are we at with that survey?
So right now, we have, I think we've gotten about 26 responses. We've put it on, we did a Survey Monkey survey. We've gotten about 10 responses online. We've gotten, we've also had a paper copy at City Hall. We've got about 16 responses there. We posted it on Facebook and on the website with a link, so we are just, I don't know. That's kind of staggering.
So how long are we going to keep that on?
We do have our newsletter going out this week. We have it in, kind of a little note in there that the survey is available online, so we're... I'm going to provide an update at the personnel committee meeting next Monday, but, you know, that's just kind of where we're at at the moment, so.
Maggie, you want to handle commission appointments and position descriptions, starting on page 32?
Sure. Mayor, council in front of you is final, we've been working on documentation, updating for the park and rec and the planning and zoning commission and the EDA and the Hyatt 12 commission committees. The, we updated the commissions application, I believe it was a little longer than this. We shortened it, four steps shortened it, then brought it to the personnel committee for review. Also in front of you is the commission member appointment policy. That just kind of provides a more clear process of how members are appointed to each commission or committee. Also in front of you is our position descriptions for the economic development authority, the parks and rec commission, the planning and zoning commission. One major change was to the park and rec commission. We do, we now allow up to two members to be residents of the neighboring township. They're in front of you today for final approval, so that moving forward, these will be the documents that we use when we have commission or committee members apply.
Discussion?
Let these applications and stuff we discussed this last month, have we been advertising for this at all because both our man rec and planning and zoning needs commissions? Is it advertised?
I believe we have. I know it's in the newsletter, I'm trying to think of this.
It might be on the website.
I know it's on the website too. Is it just planning and zoning or is it park and rec? Just park and rec?
I'm sure. I believe park and rec.
Okay.
On the page. On their own park and rec page. Yeah. So nothing on Facebook? Because that was our discussion last month, that that was going to be there? That we were going to start doing that?
Yeah, and I didn't know, and that might have been an error on my part. Coming to the next personnel committee meeting, I was going to do a social media policy, and I didn't know if we wanted to review that before we started. But I can definitely put that on there that I think was an error on my part. So, we can get that on Facebook this week, so.
Along with the EDA, this is just a recap from the EDA meeting. Have we reached out to other businesses, seeing if there was an interest?
Yes, I believe, I know Jo has written on that. I think she did contact somebody at the page, but I don't think he is interested in that this time.
Do we need a motion on that? To approve the appointment and position descriptions?
Yes. I'll make the motion to approve the commission appointments and position policy and position descriptions.
Second?
I'll second that.
Floyd? Aye. Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries five vote. Any planning and zoning? Any discussion as far as the minutes there?
I mean, I don't know if you have the chance to review it.
Need a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion to approve the planning commission minutes from February 17.
Second?
Hold on a second. I'm sorry. I just got to read something there for a minute. In the planning and zoning, I just got to clarify this. According to the state statute, any resident can serve as a commission on here as long as they are not a full-time employee of the city as defined in the city's personnel policy. Can you clarify that?
Yes.
Is that paid employee, full-time paid employee?
So, it, I did, I had, I had a commissioner ask, a planning commissioner ask, ask about this, and so I did do some research. According to state statute, you cannot be, you can't serve on the commission if you're a full-time employee as defined by your personnel policy. Our personnel policy defines full-time employee as somebody who works 48 hours a week. And so, it is, according to the interpretation, that if somebody is a part-time employee and they do reside in the city of Montrose, that they would be able to serve on that commission.
So, this was kind of a topic of discussion at our park and rec meeting. So does it, does this go for park and rec as well? That if you're not, if you're a full-time employee, you cannot serve as a commission?
Right.
So any resident can serve as a commission member?
Exactly. If you're not a full-time employee.
Right. I'm not a full-time employee of the city.
Okay.
But we also address that as a litigation in respect to having your role as a council member and representing things for approval of the council would constitute a conflict of interest.
Understandably, but as the state statute states as a commission of planning and zoning, the state statute is still the same.
No, it is, it is. It's for all commissions or committees.
Right. So if a council member would like to be on the commissions, they could be on the commission.
I believe...
And still have a liaison.
I feel like that's a conflict of interest.
Well, I don't disagree, but the state statute says...
Yes, state statute does say that, but I think from a legal perspective, that is a conflict of interest. I mean, being there as a citizen is one thing, but, yes.
I don't disagree, but then we should, like...
I think we put that into the personnel policy.
I was just going to say, no, you might have put that into the personnel policy saying that it would be a conflict of interest.
Because the way it is right now...
Yeah. Jill, we consider that park and rec commission.
Right.
Actually, where it should reside is in our council responsibilities that are in our ordinance, I would imagine.
And we can discuss where the best place is for that. I think, and the way I look at it is, a conflict of interest is not necessarily a state statute. I am as far as what I've, what I've given you before as far as opinion about where someone's serving on a park and rec commission, that you won't find that in state statute. That's just sort of a, you know, feels like a conflict of interest because of things going up the chain of command. So, I'm not familiar with, I guess, the discussion you had in your last planning commission meeting. I can look at that if you'd like, but that's my, see the pants take on it for conflict of interest purposes.
Well, it was just a few months ago, we had discussed because we were short on commissions and correct.
Right.
If, you know, so, kind of reading this, it states that Jill could be...
Right, it states the opposite.
Yep. Well, the question is specifically related to the fire department, and so that's what my research was based on. We can look into the council's...
We had discussions previously in reference to council that we're serving there, because I think that was brought up before, and although it's not a violation of state statute, it is not necessarily best practice.
Right.
And that would mean that whoever does serve on that commission would then have to abstain from any votes that are at the council because they've pre-committed to whatever they agree with the council.
I'm not saying I disagree. I'm just saying the way that it's worded in the planning commission minutes and what I was told last month are the exact opposite of that, quite literally. So that's my only concern. Is there needs to be some clarification as far as what's allowed and what's not allowed or what is ill-advised?
Maggie, do you want to avoid it and expand upon the conflict of interest issues that you addressed?
No, there's nothing that needs to be expanded unless you need to get the education again.
No.
I don't need to have anything expanded, I'm just saying, I feel like there needs to be something in writing.
We just need to pick. It needs to be... We need to pick which side we're going for because they tell you no, they tell them yes.
And I think the issue is that...
Pick a side and then put it in writing.
A council member should not serve on a committee other than as a liaison role.
Yes.
And that's where we're at. That doesn't mean that anybody else who's a park and employee of the city can't serve on a commission. They can. And where the conflict of interest comes into is when a council member who brings matters before the council then votes on those matters they have already pre...
I'm aware, right.
Yeah.
What I'm explaining is we just need to have it in writing somewhere.
And it should be in a...
It is a conflict of interest for city councils to be on a commission for these reasons, therefore it's not allowed. It needs to be written somewhere, otherwise we could continue to run into this issue from council, 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 council.
Let's look at an amendment to the ordinance for council responsibilities.
And that sounds like maybe a good idea to bring to the personnel committee meeting next week. And then to the council meeting, they both, it's an official ordinance amendment.
Mm-hmm. And that would serve for all the commissions, not just park and rec.
Right.
Everyone. I mean, get all the stream that I was for. Okay, still have a motion pending.
I have a question. I had made a motion to approve the pers, sorry, planning commission meeting minutes from February 17.
I have another question on the meeting minutes, if that's where we're still at. The election of officers, I see that's the second one, that's why. Is this correct? The election of officers, Catherine won, Chuck won, and Cory, what was two?
So, for the, I know we're going to go into that next. For the position of chair, Cory DeWitt got two votes, Catherine got one, Chuck got one. And so Cory was recommended to council to be the position of chair. For vice chair, Sylvia Henry received two votes, Chuck Small received two votes. And then votes for the position of secretary, Sylvia Henry received four votes.
But she declined.
But she declined that. And I think...
So can they, like, vote for themselves, correct? Because I would have guessed that Catherine probably would have received two votes for chair.
Yeah, she would have voted for herself.
If she would have voted for herself.
By Cory did, yeah.
Yep.
We all probably had two votes because you can nominate yourself and vote for yourself.
How do you nominate yourself?
You can self-nominate.
That would be...
I mean, it really, I think even the members didn't know what was going on.
Sylvia has a question.
Yes.
Yes, Sylvia.
Mayor and council, I believe Cory nominated himself.
He did.
And is that really legal to nominate yourself? I know you're going to vote for yourself.
Yep, according to Roberts rules, it's legal. That's the way it was.
We don't follow all the Roberts rules.
We do follow Roberts rules because Roberts rules are in our ordinance. We do follow Roberts rules.
It is legal, but is it right? I don't know. I think it should be nominated by somebody, the same way we do in park and rec. We, Sylvia doesn't nominate herself, somebody nominates her. So I'm just saying, I'm guessing that Catherine would have received two votes, because I think the whole planning commission was wholly lost at that meeting, from my understanding.
They were.
As to what actually happened and who voted and how everything went on. So it would have been a tie then.
And as a matter of fact, Sean could probably led the light on this too because he had somebody in his office the next day talking about the planning and zoning meeting.
I did have a non-resident come to my office and express their disgust of the planning meeting to me.
What was it?
I mean, it stood advertising for Montrose. It was the whole meeting in general. They should have been ashamed of themselves as well as the comment I had.
So, I mean, yeah, like you said, you can nominate yourself, I mean, in all rights, as you're saying, you should be nominated by somebody other than yourself because, I mean, if you...
Not just, it depends on the founding rules of the body. And that is Roberts rules. The question most states that you can self-nominate.
I understand that, but...
There's nothing wrong with what happened.
Well, that's not what people, that's not what people would be saying. So I'm just saying, I, I think...
But we can't change our rules just because, like, we might have said. I mean, we need to educate them about rules then.
No, what I'm saying is the behavior of that meeting is what needs to be changed. And I just want to clarify that there was only one nomination, one vote for Catherine because I think there probably would have been two. If Catherine would have voted for herself, which I'm guessing she probably would have, correct? I nominated Catherine.
Yeah, and then she'll, that's one vote, and Catherine probably got two votes.
So then what do you do with it? In the case of a tie? If there was a tie?
According to Roberts rules, in the case of a tie, the chair can decide the tie.
But it's for the chair position.
I understand that.
So is it the previous chair?
No, it's the chair.
I mean, I don't think...
And in the absence of a decision, the vice chair takes over as chair.
I really think you have to take the vote over, because now everybody on the commission will understand how it's done. They can all nominate themselves.
Well, I think...
I don't have known that today.
Well, no, they did not understand that. That's, that's Sylvia right there.
But if they didn't understand, why didn't they say something at the time and say, we don't understand any clarification?
I think they may have and asked for the whole ugliness of the meeting came about.
I was like, then why wasn't it either explained or tabled or the re-vote?
Yeah, right.
I think actions should have been taken then at that meeting if this wasn't an issue. Did you have a question?
No, there were four people at the meeting. There are four votes to comment for.
That's true. I mean, if they voted, if they weren't clear, they should have asked for clarification. I mean, I wasn't at the meeting, but I mean, if I didn't understand something at our meeting, I would ask for clarification. Or if I didn't understand something in the packet, I ask for clarification before the meeting, so I'm prepared. I mean, I would assume that they knew that elections were coming up at this meeting. I would think they would have had a packet, meaning on the committee. That's just my opinion.
I just want clarification on it, so. I think your motion is not...
Right. Because I approved the minutes. We can have the other discussions the second one. I'm just approving what is as written.
The next thing on the information that we have, the approval of the vice chair.
I'll second the motion.
Melissa, approval of the minutes.
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd? No. Motion carries three, two. Okay, next issue that we have is, since we have two and the most, the second has a one vote, then the vice chair has been decided by the committee. one vote, then the vice chair has been decided by the, um, committee. Any discussion rather than, excuse me, the chair has been decided by the committee. Any discussion on that?
On which one?
The chair.
On the chair. Give me a sec.
Okay, hearing members, approval of minutes, that will be the chair. Second issue is that we need to make a determination as to the vice chair, whether that be Sylvia Henry or Chuck Smallwood, who receive an even number of votes.
Sean, can we do that? Or does the chair even decide?
I think the way the ordinance states is the chair decides.
Yes.
Don't quote me on that, but I'm pretty sure.
The chair decides the chair position?
Yep.
The vice chair.
The vice chair. The vice chair.
Okay. He as the council cannot delegate to the commission. It's up to the commission to match that up.
That's just like our Park and Rec commission when we had our elections. We didn't bring any of that forward to the council because it's all determined within the commission.
Yep. So the recommendation, Andy, is that this be returned to the planning and zoning commission to either conduct a reelection for the vice chair or to appoint based on the decision of the, of the chair.
Correct.
And...
And I'll make that motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe I could ask a question. So in the, on page forty-nine, we have a memo from Joanne. Maybe we're talking about different things. Here it talks about who the commission may select as their officers, and that each position shall be approved by the city council. So you're, what you're saying is that hasn't been fully decided by the commission yet, so there's nothing for you to act on now.
Right.
For the vice chair.
Gotcha.
Um, can I just ask a question about then, I, about the position of secretary? If Sylvia's not interested on what their, what the plan is for them then?
The commission will need to decide that.
They'll just decide on her. Okay.
Either appoint someone or have another vote.
Okay. Thank you.
So I move that they re-conduct their deliberations for vice chair. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Discussion, sorry. Um, I think that they, this is just my opinion again, that the whole thing should be redone. The chair, the vice chair, the secretary, so that everybody is under clarification as to, just to have it out there again.
Yeah, but who's to say at the next election someone's not gonna be mad and ask for it to be done again? I mean, that's just like a regular election. You can't just keep redoing it because someone's unhappy.
Well, I understand that, but like I said, I think with the, the meeting that was just had, it, it got, the meeting was out of hand, as we've heard from residents. And I think there was some confusion. And just to be fair, just table it until the next meeting, which is Wednesday? I think Wednesday.
The sixteenth.
Oh, so next...
No, this is...
Oh, that is this week.
That's this week.
That is this week. So I, I guess I can't be speaking. Lloyd's the liaison, so I don't know. I mean, that's kind of the day one.
I always, already asked if we should do that.
Right.
And that's the way I feel, that we should just say, hey, now everybody knows their rules and regulations and let's have a...
This should have been done before we passed the approval to, to approve the minutes.
Yeah, but they explain the situation after the vote.
Sean, do you have an opinion?
Sylvia did know about it. Catherine, I've heard it in the...
I wasn't there.
Smallwood didn't know about it. The only one that knew about it was Cory.
But I feel like it was the responsibility...
And it was Joanne Faust because Joanne Faust don't want Cory up in her...
Yeah, that's the responsibility of a commission member. I mean, I missed the meeting and I missed what I thought was an important vote, but we couldn't go back and re-vote on it because a decision hadn't already been made. Um, so I think if you don't do your homework and plan for your meetings as a commission member, you're getting paid for that. Why are you on the commission?
Well, you'll, you'll probably have less people on the commission, huh?
Well, I mean, why, why are you not, I mean, I don't come to my city council meeting without reading through the packet and answering my question and getting everything prepared. I think I, I would expect the same out of every one of our commission members.
So there's a motion up for now to return the vice chair to the commission. It's been the second minute. We need to vote on that. So we need to vote on that motion or table that motion. Is there a motion to table that motion?
There's a motion to table that.
Can the motion on the floor, though, approve it, pardon?
There was a motion to approve.
Well, we can either, either way, with the motion to back, the motion to approve the minutes has already been done. That was approved three K. The motion that's pending is the motion to return the election of the vice chair back to the commission. And that's the way it's got to be done, so there's nothing to really vote on there.
So unless there is a, a motion to remove that, we need to move forward with that vote.
For the secretary. And the vice chair.
For the vice chair and the secretary. Yes.
Hearing members, move forward with the vote. Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
I'm still gonna vote no.
And then Melissa?
Aye.
Motion carries four, one, to return to the commission the appointment of the vice chair and the secretary positions. Now we have the appointment of planning commission officers. Is that correct?
Yes. Um, Mayor and Council, I just provided a memo to you. We received an application for the planning commission. Um, she's a resident of City of Montreal. Her name is Tracy Grinault. Um, she's been a resident for over twenty years. Um, she's a member of Montreal beyond the Oireman Committee. She's interested in serving on the planning commission to make a difference in the community and to offer a fresh perspective. Um, she wants to make Montreal a place where everyone wants to live and never leave. Appointed, she, she is able to commit to the planning commission schedule, um, for every third Wednesday of the month. There are three vacancies in the planning commission at this time, and her term would be two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty. Staff met with Tracy to do a short interview, and we think that she would be a great asset to the planning commission and recommends to appoint Tracy to the planning commission.
Discussion?
Should I vote for the planning first before it comes to us to...
I don't think we need to, according to our new, um, I mean, it'll go...
I mean, if we approve it, they just got paid. And if they don't want something for something, I think we usually just put the final approval, the nomination.
Has her application been reviewed by the planning commission?
It has not. Um, but I would, the, it says in our new position description that the planning commission consists of members appointed by the city council. And so what, what our approach was, was that myself and Cory would meet with her and we would do a review for the council, or any future applicant, we would meet, um, and, you know, do a small interview and then do a memo for the council and then bring it to the council for approval. Um, that's kind of according to this new...
Motion.
Oh, let's see if I can get on this.
Further discussion? Motion?
Make a motion to approve, um, the memo appointing Tracy to the, uh, planning commission.
Second?
I'll second.
Michelle?
Uh.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Michelle and Melissa?
Aye.
And Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries five, one, appoint person to the planning commission. Okay. EDA, anything from that?
Um, not enough of the same.
Okay. Melissa?
My, my items are ten A and ten B for the most part. I just do want to give some things on a personal note to staff and council for their patience and flexibility. Lately, my wife is, you know, I have an illness that requires juggling of work and kids and other matters, so I appreciate the patience that Sean, consultants, and everybody has at the council as well. So hopefully we'll be coming on the, uh, home stretch on that this spring and summer, so.
Okay. With respect to that, is there anybody in your staff that we should go to in the event that you're not a bad?
I will, that's a good question. I will, um, you talk, we're kind of having some internal meetings on that this week, so I'll let you know on that one.
But, Andy, you don't mention that with the council as well.
I still managed to somewhat volunteer to go to the MCFOA conference on Thursday to have a booth up there, so stop by if you want to. I gotta flip the thing off two hundred in the morning right there, so.
Sure, what do you can help you?
Yeah.
Okay. Park and Rec.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
What do you mean?
Um, we had our Park and Rec meeting on March seventh. Um, in fact, Brew took and opened the meeting. She was there when we took our oath of office. Uh, approval of the March seventh minutes, approval of the February minutes, um, and the capital improvement plan was approved and sent to the council. Um, we talked, discussed the Easter egg hunt for the March twenty-sixth at ten o'clock in the Lions Park. Election of officers. Um, I was nominated as the chair and Brew was nominated as vice chair. And it was three to all, both of them, and the secretary position is still pending or vacant. Um, birth date is the twenty-second of April, and that was discussed. Arbor Day is April twenty-ninth. That was discussed, and I believe there's a Eagle Scout doing that?
Um, the Eagle Scout project has to do with a community fruit garden in the parks. Um, and he has a meeting, should be scheduling a meeting with Sean in reference to that. He's got initial approval that someone will donate those fruit trees for the project and just needs to get the final work through with Sean. That has to have four signatures before it can go move forward. Uh, that was part of it. Also, on Arbor Day, the Boy Scouts will be planting trees in two different locations, one in one of the state parks and then also along the, uh, the trail as well as a, um, snowmobile and walking trail in the park during that on Arbor Day. Nothing to do with the city for those, that event for the Pro River.
And we have, have we tabled Earth Day to April? Um, July is Park and Rec month. We talked about the summer splash event on July twenty-third at Northridge Park from four to eight. Uh, and that was a pass, three to zero.
Uh, one thing that I would say in reference to the summer splash, last year, about seven o'clock, things started to thin out. Uh, we may want to look at...
Do it to seven.
Time adjusted, uh, based on what you guys decide on that one. But, um, as we saw it starting to thin out, we got a little bit of a thin out, and we get that seven o'clock hour, so.
Adjust to seven?
Might be good to adjust to seven, or shift it forward three to, to seven, or depend on how you want to do that. Um, and then the other issue is, uh, what you would like to have at that event as well, so we can get, move forward with the planning on that. Um, there were some events that went well, and there were some events that didn't take up so much, you know, the attendance. I think one of the ones was the gaming event where we had the sport gun thing. The sport guns weren't very powerful. They were kind of put to the wayside. Um, and then also coordinated the fire department as well because that was a big hit happening, the fire department there, and their, uh, sport gun wars.
Yeah.
No, gee, they win all wars.
And we do have vacancy positions for Park and Rec commissioners. Um, and I want to acknowledge Joel Bolstead for providing the firewood and the fire pit for skate day event back in January twenty-third, and it was adjourned at seven all three.
Any comments?
I have one. On the Easter egg hunt that we have coming up March twenty-sixth, I know we discussed to have a flyer done. Have we gotten that flyer yet? Because I sent you a mobile at the meeting.
It's in the newsletter like it was supposed to be.
Can we get copies of it to put it around town?
Certainly. Anne's got it. I've got it too.
Okay.
Also, I'd like to, if I could expand on the Easter egg, egg hunt a bit. It was discussed at, discussed at the commission level to expend some funds for this. I would like a, uh, council motion for that, moving to provide candy for the eggs. Um, the commission, a couple hundred bucks was targeted for that. If we can get a council motion for that to proceed so I can purchase that this week.
Well, did you just say candy?
Yes.
And the baskets?
And the baskets, too.
Okay. I'd like a motion then to, um, approve Park and Rec funding. Did we say up to five hundred?
No, two hundred.
Two hundred would be more than enough. I picked some pricing we got last night at Walmart, so.
Okay. Up to two hundred dollars then for, um, candy and gift baskets for a total of like three, one for each level.
Um, before we second one, is there anything left in the funds that were allocated for other events as well?
We have seven dollars.
Okay. Um, we could use those funds as well.
We, yes, we really needed council approval then. We had so much money for so...
I just still work on coffee.
It wasn't, yeah, it wasn't specifically targeted to where it was going, so, yes, okay. Second?
I'll second that.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries five, one, for the Park and Rec minutes.
I'll have a motion to approve the travel afterwards.
I'll second.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
And Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries five, one, for the Park and Rec minutes. Fire Department?
Can we get the...
Do you have the Capitol improvement plan for the Park and Rec? Yeah, I do, yes.
Any discussion on that one?
No, I think it looks great.
I can certainly go through it if you like. Why don't you give us a review on that one so that benefit everybody else who's here as well, Sean, if you would, quickly? Certainly. Um, before you tonight, council and the mayor, on page fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-five on your packet is the commission, Park and Rec commission approved, um, capital improvement plan that we've been working on diligently for the last several months. plan that we've been working on diligently for the last several months. The plan identifies many needs in the Park and Rec program, and one of those being, one of the, main one of those being is developing, develop, further development of the regional park. That's the number one item on page fifty-three. The six, the twenty sixteen plans are to construct a facility at the park to consist of a warning room and a storage building and a restroom. Our initial plan was to potentially bring in a modular classroom that was being given to us by the Buffalo School District. However, after several hours of sharpening my pencil, it just doesn't work out for us. Kind of shifting to Plan B, which consists of a thirty by forty-foot building that'll be going out there. We've been working on that for the last ten days or so, and try to tie all that together and bring that to council for April. I met with the building inspector today and things moving forward on that. We were pushing the sixty to seventy thousand dollar range on the module class, modular classrooms, and it really didn't. The funds weren't, were being spent in a, not the best way, so we pulled the plug on that project. Moving forward, also, Park and Rec Commission identified many walking trail segments that are fragmented within the city. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, almost a dozen different areas that the capital improvement plan highlight, highlights on, on there. Some of them being, uh, walking trail going from Highway twelve south on Highway twenty-five, trying to identify a walking trail from Forest Creek Park to Aspen Lane, determine a walking trail within North Ridge Park, same thing in Thorson Park, looking at a walking trail segment from Emerson Avenue North to Thorson Park, from Thorson Park to Land Park, and from Hogan Drive to Seventh Street North, which is, several of those would be a completion of fragmented trails to tie them all together. Couple of the things we looked at in walking trails was lighting, lighting. There was two different areas identified in the CIP, one of those being the current walking trail from County Route twelve over to Emerson Avenue North, kind of behind, be just north of Old Midy Lane, looking at some solar lighting there potentially, and the other section being along Highway twelve going west between Garfield and Clementa, additional solar lighting is being looked at there. And also a seal coat of the current asphalt walking trails, another walking trails that are asphalt that have been seal coated since they've been put in, and it is a dire need for that. We're probably looking at twenty seventeen for that. It also identifies a off-street park in for Land Park, additional restroom facilities, and maybe even upgrading some restroom facilities in the future for a couple of different parks, either Breckness Park or the Regional Park or North Ridge Park. All depends on what we can get in with grant money.
Sean, are you looking at vault type or are you looking at full-service restaurants?
Hmm, either one, but it hasn't been decided on what we're exactly going to do yet, Ken. We're just identifying the need. I would say right now that the one at Breckness Park would be a full-blown facility, being that it's the busiest park in town. There may be some modifications to the existing park shelter to qualify for grants on that, so you can't do one, you gotta do both to be eligible for the DNR grant, so. We're also, the commission also recognizes the need for maybe putting in a new community center. The community center that we have now served the community well, but it has out, the community has outgrown what the community center can offer back to the community. A new community center when incorporated recreational center, that would be great investment back into the community, that could offer the residents many age, many choices of activities, any time of the year. They also, commission also identified, moving forward, we'll get more specific.
One thing on that one also, when we do the planning piece on that one, on the community rec, rec center, we need to focus on both youth and senior activities on both ends of the spectrum there.
And then, the commission also, as we move forward with this capital improvement plan in the years from now, this will be updated annually, and we can get more specific as far as line item number six, park equipment and upgrading playground for handicap accessibility. That's part of the reason why we're sending an employee to be certified playground inspector, so we get up to speed on all the ADA rules and requirements. They also recognize the need for swimming pool slash.
Let me go back to six on that one. The one thing I would consider as well is that we may, when we start timelining, look at number six ahead of number five based on the cost of those two items. If that's something we look at when we're doing timelining.
And then, the commission also identified eventual need for swimming pools, excuse me, slash, splash pad as it was pertaining to public survey a couple, three years ago. And then concession stand.
On the swimming pool splash pad, does that estimated cost also include the estimated annual maintenance cost, staff, chemicals, water, safety insurance?
No.
And we should roll that piece into it as well? That's a key piece of any swimming pool, splash pad not so much, but swimming pool is a very high annual maintenance cost.
And then, concession stand upgrading for a new facility at Harbor Field. The commission identified the need for that, and then again, the dog park, the commission identified that as, again, as results of public survey. So that's the list of items that we worked on, and we're seeking council approval to incorporate this into the master part, or the master CIP flag for the entire city.
Is the Eagle Scout project still moving forward with the concession stand?
Correct.
Good, okay. Any other discussion?
Okay, motion to approve including this in our CIP as a work for the timelining.
I would motion to approve the CIP for Park and Rec.
I'll second.
Did, one question, Sean, did you take these here off of that survey that they took two, three years ago?
Some of those we did, yes. Nellersburg recognized by the commission. Wasn't there a walking pad around that whole thing, too, pretty high up in that?
Walking pad around what?
Around the park there.
There will be.
Yeah.
Because I know that that was pretty high on the, on the list of what their people wanted to hear.
Yep. Any other discussion? Okay, motions been made, be seconded. Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote I, Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion carries five, vote. They include the Park and Rec CIP input for our master CIP plan. Now, Fire Department?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you, in the packet is our monthly activity report. I'd like to draw your attention to a couple of important items. Down in the special info area, burn permits are now needed for open burning. Anything that's over three foot by three foot by three foot or outside of a campfire ring requires burning permit. And those can be obtained through any fire warden in this area, so. And then we also have the Homeland Security Emergency Management Training tomorrow, starts at six thirty here at the community center. Staff and council are invited to attend. Would be a great kind of kickoff for what's to come with the emergency management stuff as well, because that's going to incorporate a lot of the emergency management stuff. And then, the two thousand fifteen firefighter of the year award went to Tom Markington. The top responders for two thousand fifteen went to Darren Oram, Mike Markington, Ryan Lazenby, and Willie Bowers Schmidt. I'd like to express extreme thanks to Sergeant Darso of the Red Pony Sheriff's Office. His actions that he took on February tenth at the scene of a kitchen fire resulted in a significant reduction in loss of property. We could have had our hands full that night if he had not done some quick action there, so huge thanks out to him. And all of those are mentioned later in the acknowledgement section as well. And then to Jason, who from the city, for helping us put our skate unit back into one of our grass rates, so. Any questions on the activity report? The two thousand fifteen annual report is almost completed. It's been a busy first part of the year here with some grants and some projects and stuff that came up, so that's had to be pushed back every once in a while, but I'm hoping to have that completed and presented to you at the council meeting next April. And then just again, a reminder for the railway awareness training to be held tomorrow here at the community center.
Any other comment, discussion?
What time do you say it's done?
Six thirty.
Yep.
Thank you. Engineering?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First item there, I want to bring forth to you a funding opportunity for some drinking water projects through the Public Facilities Authority. As you may or may not have seen, the governor has their, his proposed budget out for the steps by him. Part of that proposed budget is a lot of additional funding into the Public Facilities Authority program. PFA program provides funds for drinking water projects, which involves wastewater projects. And this is probably the highest that I've seen the governor ever propose to fund this program. Most of the funds are typically very, very low interest loans, lower than any city can get on the open market. The funding, basically the state funds the program by paying, essentially paying some interest, so that the cities can receive interest rates as low as sometimes one percent level. There is also some grant opportunities through this program. There's some, some new language and, and new discussion, new proposals out there for some potential grant opportunities for water treatment projects. We don't know a lot of details about that particularly yet, however, this has happened in the past, and basically the only way to get in line for any of this funding is to be on the, what they call the PPL and IUP list, project priority list and intended use plan. So really the first step to getting yourself in line to be eligible for whether it be low interest loans or grant opportunities is to request a project to be placed on PPL and IUP list. It does not commit the city to doing anything, does not commit the city to, if they're funded for a project, to doing the project. Actually, modules have been on this list quite a few different types in the past, the wells and wellhouses, and the council at that time decided not to move forward with the project, and we just either requested it to be extended to the next year to be placed on the list again, or just drop it off the list completely. So it's our recommendation to, to place three projects on the PPL and IUP list, just to put you in a position, best position in case any funding does come along, especially grant opportunities. Because if you're not on the list, you're, you're not going to get any tip on the line with it. So the first one, we're pretty familiar with, is the, is the new well and wellhouse. We've discussed that one fairly often in the past. Obviously, as we know, the, there's a, there's a definitely a need to replace the old, old wellhouse that sits adjacent to the community center here as well as drilling a new well. So the project that we would propose to place on the list would be a new well and a new wellhouse, had a total estimated project cost of about nine hundred and fifty-six thousand. That's kind of the, the report that we did had three options in it. There is the.
I just, I just changed the desk.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions? I mentioned Michelle.
Michelle, yeah.
Yeah.
Are you, are you jealous? You want to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was it a silver sheet?
Yeah. Did you ever get my number?
I have it.
Huh?
I have it.
Oh.
I just have four ones. Nope, and I, I'm only gonna buy three actually. Not one.
Okay, you ready? All right, so.
All right, so again, the new well and wellhouse, there was three options presented in a, in a study that we completed, and this is one of the three options. This would, this would be the maximum cost of those, of those three options. This is the higher of the, of the three costs. And the reason that, you know, we're recommended select this one is just because it's always easier to go down in cost if a different option is selected rather than to increase it, so. This is the recommendation, recommended option in the report, and that's the, that's, that's the one here. The second opt, or the second project would be for water tower number one, which is the multilayered water tower. tower, Jason, community center over here. We did an evaluation on that tower, let somebody climb the tower, do a full inspection regarding the Department of Health code, OSHA code, looked inside the tower, looked at the coatings. Obviously, from the outside, you can see the coatings are getting worse and worse every year. There's a lot of peeling going on, a lot of paint that's coming off, and it needs a complete recoating of both the interior and exterior of the water tower. Looking at, due to the multi-legged configuration of it, it also has lattice legs on it. A little of lead-based paint on a configuration like that is extremely difficult, very, very time-consuming. Probably looking at a very preliminary process, I mean, probably looking at close to $500 per project cost. Completely redo that, bring it off code for OSHA, Department of Health, and redo the coatings. That being said, just for comparison purposes, the cost of a new tower, that's a $50,000 gallon water tower, doubling the capacity of it to $100,000 gallons is about $720,000, so.
And that does not include removal and abatement of the current old tower?
It probably would not include removal of that, that's correct. I understand is what the old one, they do typically just cut those up into pieces with the lead-based paint and dispose of them.
Scrap.
Yep. Makes it easier to refitting it, so you don't have to blast them all down, since you're destroying the tower. There's no higher standard, no requirements. We obviously use tasking around the area to make sure that there's no lead-based paint remnants, especially being apart, make sure that that helps clean up property. So the recommendation is to go ahead and again, for the PTL list, since it doesn't commit shit to anything, put the place of a new tower, doubling the capacity. This overall pedestal-type tower or composite-type tower, there's some advantage of that with multi-legged as well, so. There's some side advantages from a maintenance perspective on that. The third project there, I know has not been discussed a lot, and I just want to, I don't really want to take a lot of time tonight on it, but I want to take enough time that, just some time to explain, I guess, where our thought process on it is. It's a placement of a water treatment plant on the list. Montrose does have very high levels of manganese in the water at all three well sinks. They are much higher than the Department of Health guidance values. Magne is isn't a chemical or isn't... An item that is required is not an MCR maximum contaminant level, it's just the guidance value. So however, it does have, like I say, some recommendations. And the Montrose waters is definitely above those. So the only way to remove that from the water is by treatment planning. With the new discussion there about water treatment plants, we thought it would be as good a time as any to at least put it on there. Doesn't, again, doesn't commit the city to anything. Think it is something that probably should be looked at for the long-term planning for the city due to the high levels of manganese in the water. And there is also high levels of iron, not quite as high as manganese, but there's high levels of iron as well. The benefits of a plant are, A, some health benefits, B, benefits to the system overall, just less maintenance on the system. Right now, we put in chemicals into it, into the water to keep it from oxidizing or forming, basically attaching itself to the pipeline. But there is still some higher maintenance with that. So we haven't really went and dived into this enough to know exactly what the cost would be for a treatment plant here. However, a community that's typically the size of Montrose, you're probably looking at a cost of somewhere between $5 million for a full-scale water treatment plant. The other reason that's very beneficial to look at it at this time, while we're kind of looking at the new well, wellhouse option, is if you did do a treatment plant, that would not require the wellhouse. So there would be some cost savings per se from that. If you did a plant, you wouldn't have to do a wellhouse. Obviously, it's a lot more money, but there's a lot more benefit to that as well. Also, just setting it up for the future, you start putting wells and wellhouses all around town, it becomes more and more expensive and more difficult in the future to build a water treatment plant. Certainly can be done, it just requires more raw water means connect everything tighter to the other. So it's our recommendation to go ahead and put that on the list for funding, and just to see what may come up of it.
Now, that $952,000, that includes the new tower and the well?
No, the $956 is just for the new well and wellhouse, and then the tower's $720 on top of that.
On top of that?
Yeah, that's correct.
And then what is that now, you said $50,000 gallons, can we go up to $100,000?
That's what's in here, yes, that's correct.
Is that very much of an increase with that?
That's a double the size.
And we would look at that before we did do the final project. We would take a closer look at fire flow needs, fire flow projections, a lot based on the population demand, also based on the population projections. At that time, depending on when you do this, if our comp plan is updated, kind of look and see how big you want to put that up, how much you want to count for growth in the future. You know? I think $100,000 would probably do you pretty well and get you in the future ways, so. It's not a question of how much you want to plan for growth.
These grants are through the state bank?
Yes, they're all state banks, yep.
No, is there a federal grant? I know there, you know, I was just saying, Michigan, you know, they're talking about the government getting involved.
Yeah, there's no... No real federal grants right now.
But if we would get, would this grant, would it kill us if they come on super?
By all means, if there's federal grants available, we'll look at every opportunity that's available, so.
Further discussion? Have a motion.
I'm going to motion to have Justin submit the projects onto the PFA.
PDL.
PDL.
Sorry, priority list and intended use.
On the list listed. It's available for justice.
Jill?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
Iowa and I, Lloyd?
Hi.
And Melissa?
Hi.
Motion carries five oh. Include those projects on the PDL and IUP. Hey, RFP discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I guess I'll just give you a little bit of background about Bolton Lake, and I think most of you know who we are and what we've been doing, but we've been providing engineering services to the city of Montrose since 2001 for about 15 years now. I personally have been in Montrose since 2005, providing engineering services to specifically to the city of Montrose for a little over 10 years. So we are very familiar with the community, we're very familiar with a lot of the projects the city's done. As you recall, when we were doing the A U A R, I got a map up there, majority of the developments in Montrose and majority of the city projects have been completed while we were city engineer, or at least in the process of being developed at that time. So I feel like we do have a pretty good history of the city and pretty good knowledge, as much knowledge as anybody about the developments and how they work and infrastructure in Montrose. We also do provide mapping services to the city. We have an online mapping system that we house in-house at our corporate offices down in McAdoo, and we provide that free of charge to the city of Montrose. There's no monthly service fee or anything like that, we put it on our server and put all the city maps on there, it's available to the public works staff to use, it's available to city hall to use for mapping purposes, looking at where all the sewer, water main, all that stuff, if you do that. And then I guess just a little bit of our fee schedule. In looking at our fee schedules, I'd be more than happy to provide you with a detailed fee schedule if you so choose, but we have, if you look at our fee schedule, that was proposed back in 2001 when we became city engineers versus what our fee schedule is at today, you'll see very little increase in those fees in the last 15 years. In some cases, the fees actually have not even went up. For the city engineer, primary city engineers myself, I still fall within that fee range that was provided in 2001, for my fees, as an example. Some of our other areas have went up a little bit, but they're definitely much, much further, much less than industry standards. Typically, industry standard is a 10-3% to 5% for a year increase, and I know we're at much more less than that. Also, looking at it from, I guess, from a project perspective, I encourage you to really look at fees from a project perspective as well, and what that is in percentage of the construction cost. I know we've always been funded on those as a percentage to construction. We work hard at maintaining those percentages and being in line with industry standards on this. And there is cases where we go over, we write the extra cost off. So I do know that we're comparable to our competitors as well. And then also, I think it's just important to look at the quality engineering services. We really pride ourselves in doing high-quality engineering services. We pride ourselves in client satisfaction, and we really think that's the most important thing, is client satisfaction and provide high-quality engineering services. I know that providing low-quality engineering services can cost a city greatly in the long run. Might be cheaper upfront, but definitely high-quality engineering pays for itself in the long run, I really believe that, I really think that's very true. So like I say, in summary, we really like to pride ourselves on client satisfaction. We lose very few clients, and if there's anything that we're doing that you're not happy with, I do want to happy, and I'd like to sit down with you and address that on a one-on-one basis of what it is and what we can do to change. Or if you're not comfortable talking to me, certainly talk to somebody else that, well, the man Brad, who's been involved in Montrose and is still around, talk to him on a frequent basis, he was the engineer back in 2001 before I came here, so. There's a long history there, and we've always provided that service of what we feel is satisfactory or we hope is.
Discussion? I know there were some concerns voiced about one outcome RFP. Was there a discussion about that?
We have a discussion, however.
Where did they come from, the item be on the agenda in eight?
I spoke with Lloyd. Lloyd requested it. It's on the agenda.
Lloyd, you have concerns that we should go out for RFP?
Well, there's a lot of people in the community that's not too happy.
Okay. And what specifically is that?
I've had some dealings with Justin too that really wasn't happy, but beyond myself, I have a lot of citizens that, I don't know if they have this on here, we could, I think we should have a workshop on this.
My concern though is if we change, looking at changing horses in this treaty, we're changing horses as we are, and looking at a different one, that we would lose all that matriarchal or patriarchal knowledge, specifically the mapping piece, which is expensive to reproduce. That's a huge piece. And that would, I'm sure that Bolton Lake would not share that with someone else coming on board, and that would be something that would have to be considered as far as the cost of putting someone else in that position. Are your concerns that we're looking at what the costs are to the city? And whether we're...
I think the cost to the city is a lot to be, but I think we have a chance to compare with some other cities that people say.
Okay. I think we should probably table that discussion until we get time to look at it a little more in depth and determine whether or not there's factual evidence to support this concern, and if there's not factual evidence, then I think we should table it completely. And as I said, may bear, looking into other cities and see where they're at, but I think what you'll find is that the costs are pretty much very similar, apples, you know, oranges to oranges. And if they're not, then yes, we could should consider. Any other discussion?
So who's going to look into it in the other cities?
I think Lloyd is going to look into that, right? He brought up.
Oh, right, but that was discussed with our waste management, that we were not allowed to do that. So why can we do it with this and not that?
I think he's just going to compare like what other cities are paying for engineering capacity, whereas the waste management, well, he actually wanted to go to the companies for a quote. He wouldn't be going to the companies, he would just be talking to other cities about their services and experiences.
You're looking at city data versus one?
Yeah, and that would be similar to like with me, he's been looking at data for, you know, pay rates and things like that, it's the same thing.
I only, I think that's great, but I think we just need to use caution as far as getting the appropriate data. I mean, what one city is doing might be completely different than what our city is doing, what they're paying their engineer for might be completely different than what we're paying our engineer for. They may not be doing a capital improvement plan right now with their public works director.
I agree.
So we just need to make sure that the information we're receiving is accurate and similar at least, yeah. And I can always help with that as well.
And any further?
Did we make a motion to table that, David?
No, we're going to do that. Motion to table. Don't bring that.
I'll make a motion to table it. Tell further investigation.
Second?
One second.
Michelle?
Hi.
Iowa and I. Lloyd?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Jill?
Hi.
Motion carries five oh, table. Tell we have further evidence. New business, unless there's any other old business.
Um, yeah, I'm thinking of RFP, so we have, did I miss the RFP first? Uh, garbage?
Did we do that? We, that...
Close to March 30.
That doesn't come in until, I think the RFPs are coming in on this Friday, and then the discussion won't be until after that.
Okay.
Okay. New business. Admin, your ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a document that, you know, there's some formatting issues here without throwing it out, but I'm looking on page 64 at the red line of your ordinance, and then if you kind of have that page there, you have page 59 there as well, you can see where my comments sort of jive with this. So I can certainly go through these quickly if you'd like, Council. This in the very top of page 64, I should have put in there like the ordinance number, and if you're ready to adopt this tonight, we can, I can work with your city clerk to get that in there, and then there's publication requirements for ordinances, of course. So the whole purpose of these changes are to sort of get some more teeth in your administrative citation ordinance and provide for a fee schedule for various zoning and nuisance fees. And on page 66, I do have a resolution establishing administrative fine schedule. Section 3 of that resolution has a list of a bunch of fees, which I got, those are mostly from the city of Woodbury, which of course is a vast city in the city of Montrose, but it's one that I'm very familiar with, with the zoning ordinances in, as we represent that city, so I just felt, I felt familiar with that. And these numbers are just placeholders, depending on what you'd like to see, I know, not wedded to those at all, or not wedded to the list there on page 66 at all either. However, there may be some violations that you'll want to make sure that you have administrative citation authority over, such as noise violations and various nuisance violations. We have, I think there are certain properties maybe throughout the city that you're aware of that this would work on, and also this is a long-term ordinance fix that would apply it obviously to all properties in the city, so it's both a short-term and a long-term document. So with that, if you have any preliminary questions, I'll sort of jump into my comments here. So this essentially commends chapter 25 of the code of ordinances of the city. And so I, in there, section 25.01, I added an A and a B, as you'll see on the red line on page 64. Essentially, this is in most cities' ordinances where they have administrative fines, is that somebody who's been charged can choose to go through the prosecution process, where they get prosecuted to court like other criminal defendants do. It's probably against their interest to choose that, because then they could be subject to a misdemeanor conviction, which would result in a maximum fine of $1,000, and potentially up to 90 days in jail. So in this case, when you do administrative citations, the whole point of this is basically to do a citation process where it's faster, and it gets the, it gets the item repaired soon, and you can do that through a sort of smaller fine, and then basically a negotiation with, hey, let's get this repaired, or get the nuisance taken care of. If that doesn't happen, you can always go up to... If that doesn't happen, you can always go to a criminal court, or even a civil court, where it's a civil process before a judge to get a temporary injunction, basically, to get this behavior stopped. And there'd be a court order, then that would be forced against the guilty party. And if the person doesn't live up to the court order, then they can be held in contempt of court. So there's all sorts of, which can throw you in jail that badly. So there's all sorts of safeguards in this, but this is kind of basically the third way of enforcing these things besides civil enforcement and criminal prosecution. So that subsection B in 25.01 is just to say that the person can choose to go through the criminal court process. 25.02B, there was just a little tweak there in that certainly the city administrator can adopt additional procedures for administering this program. I'm not aware of any that they have right now, so I just changed that from a major issue.
My one comment would be, for instance, the cost of cleanup. For instance, if you have an ongoing yard, you have non, you know, annual dumping, something of that nature, or you have the cost of cleanup, and whether that can be assessed as well.
Yes. You can have that, that gets us down to sort of in 25.02B. But under the state statute that applies to this, you have basically nuisance-type charges may be cleaned up by the city, and those costs, if they're not paid by the attending owner right away, they can be assessed on taxes, so you do eventually get paid back with interest. That would include tree trimming expenses, weed elimination, which would include mowing down unsightly yards, snow icing on sidewalks, repair of sidewalks. So not necessarily all things. You can assess against property taxes. There's a list in the state statute that I mentioned there, but many of those nuisance-type things are accessible, and so you'll want to certainly be able to do that. And this ordinance would allow for that. So let's see here. 25.02C talks about, and this is where this kind of came out of this whole thing, is that the city did not have a resolution that we were aware of that listed fines for administrative fines. And so that's what I created on page 66, but I also said, well, you can also include them in your fee ordinance, which you normally change on a yearly basis. So you can do it in two locations or one or the other, but just that gives you the flexibility to do that. 25.02D and 25.03A, these are timelines for if someone gets cited on an administrative basis, and that can be done either through cities, well, I think it's probably done through your enforcement officers that are in the community, then they would have 14 days to pay the fine to the city. And then, or they could appeal to the city council within 10 days of receiving a citation. I change those because those are typically the timelines that I see in other cities provides. It doesn't allow someone to argue that they didn't know about it, they didn't get it in time, or they're on vacation or something. I mean, those normally may have shorter timeframes to respond. People normally try to come up with that. Sometimes judges or cities are persuaded by that. We talked about 25.02F on special assessments. And I think that's really the extent of these changes. I wanted to also establish this resolution on page 66, which basically allows for a fee schedule. And like I said, I'm happy to change any of these amounts. We can, you know, you can talk about in a workshop situation as well. For your zoning, for your problems that you have in the city now, you can still get at those through criminal enforcement, and we've talked a little bit about that in workshops in the past, and through civil lawsuits. This provides you a third way to do it, in an administrative citation way, which avoids a courtroom proceeding. Basically, it's something that can be administered by the city, and then the nuisance can be cleaned up. A penalty fine can be paid, or if it works out quicker than that, it can be waived if you provide more flexibility. So I entertain any discussion you have on that list of fines there. And then if you do want to adopt this ordinance tonight, I would also recommend doing a separate motion and have this, have a summary of the ordinance be published in your official newspaper instead of the entire ordinance, exactly. That would be a lot of publication costs. So that would just be a follow-on motion and a second to do. But other than that, any questions, let me know.
Discussion?
Sidewalk repairs are up to the resident?
Well, yeah, that is listed in the state statute as something that you can specially assess, although the cities often upkeep those. So that would be, we could take that out, certainly. That's just kind of...
Because actually, where the sidewalks are, that belongs to the city.
Well, a lot of times, probably, right away.
Yeah. Well, we'll have to redo our ordinance, because our ordinance states it's up to the resident to replace that if it fails.
Correct.
Unless it's determined otherwise by the council.
I've got one question, Andy. Did our RFP schedule, we have an hourly rate for public works to do lawn mowing, weed trimming, soil mow, et cetera. Do these fines addition to or replace that?
I guess my answer is that it's in addition to, because we're not changing that fee. It's in the fee ordinance, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so we're not changing that at all, so it would be in addition to. We could add a little clause, making that clearer.
I just want to clarify that.
And might that be spelled out in the assessment of fine or assessment of additional costs? Because I don't think it's really clearly addressed as to any additional cost that can be assessed as well if the city is forced to correct the problem.
Yeah, as long as those are in the fee schedule ordinance, which I think...
Which answers the cost of maintenance, or the cost of hourly work, is there?
My question on this is, these ordinances and these ordinance fees, who's going to go out and check to make sure we're complying by these ordinances and assess the fees and so on? So who's going to be doing that? Because in the past, they weren't really followed through on, or, you know, really checked into. So who's, you have all these ordinances and all these fees, but who's going to enforce them?
I think right now that would fall on me. I'll do that.
The language on page 64 on 25.02A, and that's your current language that you have now, because that's not redlined yet. So any member of the sheriff's department or any other person employed by the city that has authority to enforce this code shall go and do that just by... But oftentimes, in smaller cities, the administrator does that. You know, you call the chair and the name, and you do that, too. But I mean, you're right. That's the, that's, on paper, you have a great portion of the scheme. In practice, you have to have something to do with. So it's like deputizing, basically, someone who says you have to keep track of these things. That's the key. It's not really divided for in the four corners of the paper, because it's kind of hard to do that until you get out there.
But as it stands right now, we have no need to enforce it.
Correct.
Any other discussion?
So if we know something that's an ordinance issue, do we then forward it to Maggie? And then she checks into it? Is that, can we do that?
Yeah, I think that's a good practice.
Yes. Any other discussion? Maggie, do we know what the appropriate ordinance number would be, 2016-XX, just yet?
I believe it would be 2016-5.
And so we can put 2016-5 and 2016-7 together, correct?
Yes, and the fact that you have these fees in a resolution, it's much easier to change a resolution or amend it. There's no publication requirement on that. It's just obviously kept in the file of the city, and then you didn't have to repeat it. So if anything isn't working here in the resolution, let's just change it on the idea.
So that's the same way if we want to change the price of the fines?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Any other discussion? Motion to approve 2016-07 and 2016-05, and the number may be subject to change at 2016-5.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2016-05 and 2016-07.
Second?
I'll second.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Most carries five o to approve 2016-05, which is the...
The ordinance.
The Montrose Code Ordinance Amendment. And then 2016-07, resolution establishing the fees.
And then, Mayor, can you give a second motion, authorize a summary of all? I saw you...
I have a second motion to publish a summary of those changes for publication of general papers.
I'll make the motion as stated.
Second? Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Most carries five o to publish a summary of those changes. 2016 Buffalo High School All Night Graduation Party.
What's that?
Have you admitted?
Comcast.
Comcast. Comcast. This is just an extension, right, Maggie?
I just want to renew the meeting with President Castro.
Mayor Council, I have some comments that, I've been talking with Maggie about this to me, that might be helpful. So on page 70, we have a resolution provided to us by Comcast itself. On page 71, we got one that I believe Maggie drafted, with a different date of duration there, of 2017. So just some context on this, the 15 or 20 cities that we represent as a firm, a lot of them have been going through this renewal process. Comcast must be on a similar schedule to other cities in the area. For some cities in the metro area, they have a cable commission that is a joint powers entity that cities serve on. I've worked with the Dakota County Cable Commission. And that commission negotiates franchise renewals and extensions with, and sometimes new franchises. For example, CenturyLink is coming into the Twin Cities. So I've sat through these meetings here this spring or this winter quite a bit. I've kind of been thinking about it in the city of Montrose's case. We have a situation here where section one of the resolution on page 70 is asking for an extension through December 31st, 2020. Well, that's, I mean, four and a half years here. Now, as you know, Comcast and Time Warner intended to merge last year, and that fell apart. And so Comcast has been doing these sort of Band-Aid extensions throughout with other cities in the metro and outstate as well. And this is by far the longest term I've seen on a franchise extension. On all the other ones that I've seen, it's been about March 31st, 2017. The whole intent being Comcast is going to get its ducks in a row this year because it's recovering from that failed merger. And then we can reopen the franchise and determine adequate fees and other responsibilities that Comcast might have in the city to provide service to, you know, maybe outline areas or service to public buildings, et cetera. And we just haven't been able to do that because Comcast has been pretty unavailable due to this merger that's now fallen apart. So my thought, and I told Maggie about it, was, you know, this date, you know, perhaps the council could approve a shorter extension. And the cover letter from Comcast on page 69 does say, if this council prefers a different expiration date, we need to let them know, so this resolution would be that notification. I don't think, what I've seen in other states, they'd have any problem with that, because they've been accepting it in other cities all over the place. So that was my thought. Maggie has any add on that?
No, I don't. If it was approved, I apologize, I didn't give it a resolution number, it would be 2016-08.
Any discussion?
Do we have to make it for that long?
It's not that long.
Not that long.
It would just be a year.
2017.
Andy, correctly if I'm wrong, with this extension that just expired was an extension because they didn't have their ducks in a row, so to speak, before that?
That's correct. They really haven't for a while now.
Right.
Yeah.
I remember this, oh, you're going to do that here?
I don't either, at the satellite.
True. Yeah, I'm just out of curiosity. Is there any other providers that would want to come in this area? Because quite honestly, I hate these people. They're extremely expensive. Charter?
Other charters just moved into Buffalo recently, and I think they have a hard time getting in there.
Well, I'm telling you from personal experience, charter is very expensive, too. I actually dropped them and went to satellite.
Is this something relatively that cities have been doing? I mean, 15 years ago, I could pick whatever phone company I wanted that was in the area. You might have 300, or you might have 15 of them, or you could pick some three different cable, or two or three different garbage, or whatever, but now the cities seem to say it's this or nothing.
No, no, in the past, this Lakedale had the phone, and it was only Lakedale. You had no choice. The same thing with this. This started with Wendy Comcast, the old company, came in 15 or 20 years ago, and got the exclusive franchise.
Right, to Montrose. But I'm just talking about all over, except for the other places in Minnesota. And this is the first time I've come across this.
I mean, what are our options? Would we be able to extend this till 2017 into other options? Other cable companies?
Yeah, the examples that I have sat in on recently, and this might be being in the metro area versus not, is CenturyLink moving in. Their cable service is going to be, like Comcast has Xfinity, and CenturyLink has Prism, it was called. And so they moved into northern Dakota County, which is where I've been involved a little bit. And maybe it's just because it's more urban, and they can do it easier. Like, maybe they think it would cost too much to do out here. I have no idea. But, so I haven't heard of any other providers out here. Now the city could maybe look into that a little bit. Make some, and this is a year-long extension. It gives you time to make those contacts.
And right now, we expire at the end of March 35th, end of this month. Consensus that we should extend for one year, then?
And speedway, some phone lines and other cable companies.
Keep looking at what we have available. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve 2016-08? Which would be the one-year extension?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2016-08, a one-year extension. While we look for others.
I'll second.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Most carries five o to approve the one-year extension to Comcast, and to look in other possibilities for what might be available, and maybe we take that on. Okay, now, Buffalo High School graduation.
Mayor Council, in front of you is some information regarding the 2016 Buffalo High School All Night Graduation Party. Just provides a little information about the party that they do each year for the current graduates. I believe, as when I spoke with Wendy, the city has typically given $100 towards this event.
Have we budgeted that as well?
I believe so.
Okay, any more discussion on this one? Motion to approve $100 if you're at that end.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second. I'll second.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lissa?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh, a hundred dollars, State High School All Night Graduation Party, good idea.
All right, some upcoming meetings. There's the Highway Twelve Committee, which is March sixteenth at five thirty. Planning Commission is March sixteenth at seven o'clock. Personnel Committee meeting, March twenty-first at three. The Local Board of Equalization, April twenty-fifth at six.
Is that the upcoming, that year?
That will be at City Hall. Any other acknowledgements?
I have a couple of questions on meetings. We were just discussing, we're supposed to have a town hall meeting quarterly, and it's been four months. So we need to plan a town hall meeting as well in this. And topic of discussion, I want to...
I think last year, our first one was in April, and I think it followed with the... No, I think it was the Board of Equalization. It's not directly after that one. So apparently, we should do that again. It's already up here, that's April twenty-fifth.
But it gives...
Then I can get the information out. I'm good.
As we did last year, we hear the Board of Appeal and taxation, and then we can follow around on all.
Yeah. And I think the Board of Appeal is really quick, isn't it, typically?
Typically, yeah.
It'll be six-thirty, or it'll be eight-thirty, or it'll be session. The Board of Appeal is at six.
Six-thirty should be plenty, we haven't already been, no, no discussion here.
Is that a topic of discussion? Is that a matter?
Should we put a notice out, and agenda what's going to be out there?
I think there was, somebody had recommended with you, Michelle, about doing a study on the water bill. Is there one for these guys? Bill? I don't know. Can you go grab one?
Showing a lot of that, follow on US Department of Perk out on water bill. Would that give you plenty of time for that to get it by April twenty-fifth?
Yes, just to let the council know, we are currently redesigning the water bill. So...
That would be a good topic, then.
That would be a good topic. It may already be out by then, so we'll see. And it should be pretty self-explanatory, so the town hall meeting should last about three minutes.
But that won't be the only thing we talk about.
All right, well, we need to know what else we're going to talk about, so I'm prepared.
Should we have two topics of discussion?
Well, if we want to do a quarterly? If anybody comes, someone would like to know the update on the regional park.
That's what I was going to say. Maybe we should do a kind of...
Update or input some of the next steps.
It might be a good time to get input on what they would like to have there, as far as type of building.
And maybe try and update them on the Park and Rec plan that you guys threw up, and, you know, what maybe what they feel the priority list is? Just to kind of get some ideas on... Who are you going to go next? Versus what we already have?
Two topics, and then looking at updating on the park systems and the water bill. Anything else?
I was talking about it, it's a calendar. We said, what was it, January?
It was January.
It was January twenty-third. So it should be April, right now, the same time?
Same day.
Yeah.
We won't, they won't, it won't be yours.
So if we just hold it the next week? We want to?
Is that the second of May? We have, I mean, not that it makes a difference. Well, it does make a difference if you come back. Early on, you know, maybe there's a Monday at seven, that first Monday.
Yeah, that's the first Monday in Park and Rec.
It's Monday.
Oh, that'd be Park and Rec. Yeah, we should have some days planned.
We're going to follow Monday's conference.
Some maybe just... Yeah.
Do we have anything on the Tuesday? The third, maybe?
Do you want to keep it the same week as the big...
What the public?
So you do the twenty-sixth.
Oh, sure.
The only thing is that's Fire Wednesday, so the Fire, is Fire Wednesday coming?
Well, usually, it's the home.
Yeah, I don't think so. I mean, there's Tubbs Scouts that night, I don't know that.
Tubbs Scouts hasn't been there, but I'm...
I know, they do usually...
Or you can...
Up week, yeah. Those are the only things I know.
Okay, we move on to acknowledgements.
Wait, so the twenty-sixth?
April twenty-sixth.
Seven? Seven.
We have acknowledgements for Tom Markton as Firefighter of the Year, the top responders, Darren Orr, Mike Markton, Ryan Laspie, Willie Bowerspin, right here, County Sheriff's Officer again, Sergeant Dawson, for his quick actions in mitigating the fire at the Mindy Lane Apartments. And Jason Hillker, City of Montrose, for helping put the unit back into the grass. Any other acknowledgements? Joel Goldstead for Firewood, have you said that as well?
And the fire pit.
And the fire pit.
I want to acknowledge the Montrose Methodist Church for donating their Easter eggs to us. And Kim Weyter for donating towards the candy purchase.
And I'd like to recognize the Seattle Women for welcoming my son home. Nice job, very well done.
Thank you, Bruce, for giving me that.
Anything else?
I think the United States Army should be recognized for their two fish fries that they had that were very successful.
Very well, and well-attended, too. Very well-attended. Bigger than I spear by far. Andy, further. There are nothing, I can't hear.
I'll motion it out.
I'll motion it out. Thank you, motion adjourned. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May it, we stand adjourned. Four?
Three.